All right, it is seven o'clock. I will call the meeting in order. Please join me in the cellophage. Right, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
A motion by Councilmember Henry.
I'll second.
And a second by Councilmember Sayer. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right, uh, community comment for anything that is not on the agenda. Community comment is an opportunity for residents and other stakeholders to share issues or concerns that are not listed on the agenda with the city. Individuals must limit their comments to three minutes. Individuals should not expect the mayor of the city council to immediately respond to their comments. The city manager, if appropriate, will follow up directly with the presenter and/or respond to questions raised during the community comment at the next meeting. Let's see, it does not look like we have anyone here for community comments. Um, so moving on to the next item, um, presentations and reports. Bobby Harder, come on up, Bobby. Bobby.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Bobby Harder and I will be serving you as in the House of Representatives for our newly formed District 17B. The new district consists of the majority of Sibley County, the eastern part of McLeod County, and the western part of Carver County. So in Carver County, the cities included are the city of Carver, Norwood Young America, Hamburg, New Germany, and Watertown as part of the new district. I live south of Henderson. My husband Neil and I, we are small business owners. We have a farming operation and we grow corn and soybeans. Uh, currently I am a Sibley County Commissioner and I have been serving since 2015. I represent the east side of Sibley, of Sibley County. It has approximately thirty-two hundred people. As a commissioner, I've helped many residents on a variety of issues. The largest project that I have worked on, uh, has been addressing flooding, which happens often around the city of Henderson. When the waters rise, many of the residents that I serve have to use boats to get into and out of their property, so it is quite stressful for people. Through a collaboration with my legislators, I was able to secure funds for flood mitigation, uh, which will raise the road going north out of the city of Henderson in eight feet in some areas. Uh, this is, we, this is the largest road project in Sibley County and it will address a much-needed concern for the area. The most rewarding part of being a county commissioner are the connections that I have made and working on behalf of the residents. Serving as Sibley County Commissioner has definitely provided me the unique experience of understanding the decisions made in St. Paul, how that has a direct impact onto all of us. I do desire a more limited and efficient government. Not sure how that would happen, but I do desire that I support agriculture and small businesses, family values, safety, and our rural way of life. Meeting residents of our district, safety is one of their main concerns that I do hear about. I do want to thank the mayor John, Johnson. You were very wonderful in giving me a tour of the city and enlightened me on the information that the city is working for the levy improvements. And I do look forward to working with you in the next legislative session. So thank you for this time this evening.
Yeah, no problem. Um, Bobby came and spent about an hour and a half and we blocked the levy in the rain on Friday night and I got to bend her ear about the flood mitigation grants.
Yep, which I'm well aware of, familiar with.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, all right, up next is the employee service recognition. So, um, Brent, do you want to take this up? Do you want me just to, okay, so, um, what we've started doing is we've started doing five-year service anniversaries and everybody gets a proclamation. Tonight, we are celebrating the five years of service of two of our firefighters, Matt McCoy and Nate Dingler. So the proclamations read, whereas the city of Carver recognizes its employees for years of service throughout their employment, and whereas Matt and Nate have worked for the city of Carver for five years as a firefighter, and whereas Matt and Nate are recognized for their dedication, hard work, service to the citizens of the city of Carver and the surrounding communities, and whereas Matt and Nate have demonstrated the Carver way through preparation, respect, and compassion, which has positively impacted the city of Carver and our broader community. And whereas the city of Carver expresses gratitude for the work Matt and Nate have done as a part of the team that works together for a better Carver, now therefore, I'd be it resolved that I, Courtney Johnson, mayor of the city of Carver, do hereby congratulate and thank Matt and Nate for their five years of service. So you will make sure that they get these. All right, um, moving on to public hearings, we have the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Program, SWPPP. So, um, I will open up the public hearing. Mr. Schmidt, you can have a floor.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. I have a short presentation that we're gonna go through tonight, so I'll get that pulled up here. Okay. So tonight, um, we're gonna be talking about the MS4 permit, which is the Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System Permit that is, um, through the MPCA. Uh, this is also our annual stormwater meeting. We use this as an opportunity to kind of just give an update on where things are at within the program itself, what we've done, um, this year, what we're looking to do, um, going forward, so. First and foremost, though, uh, the purpose of the annual meeting, informing the public, again, um, what the permit does, uh, the impact stormwater does have on the natural resources, obviously, that's, that's the main part of this whole permit. Uh, receiving any input from the public, um, this is an opportunity at a public meeting, public hearing, um, for anybody to ask any questions about the SWP, um, the adequacy of it, um, that, that kind of thing. And then, like I said, just to provide a status update. So, what is an MS4? As I said, it's a municipal separate storm sewer system. So that's basically a fancy phrase for the city's stormwater collection system as a whole. So all the storm sewer piping, catch basins, ponding, everything that deals with handling, collecting, and treating stormwater within the city that we own and maintain is our MS4 system. And we are a governmental unit having jurisdiction under the, uh, section 208 of the Clean Water Act, um, for water that discharges into the state, um, the waters of the United States. So, um, at the state level, what that means is the MPCA is kind of the, the entity that administers that permit, um, for the federal government. Um, the city of Carver meets the mandatory MS4 requirement as an urbanized city in the, in the metro area, and we've been operating under this permit since 2006. So what is a SWP? Um, that's a phrase that we hear often. A SWP is an abbreviation for a, a stormwater pollution prevention program. And basically what that is, that's our program that, that deals with how are we administering the rules of the permit? So that, that is the program itself that administers those rules. Um, it describes the way that we're gonna reduce, um, or eliminate pollution into the waterways. So that includes several things. Number one, regulatory mechanisms, so ordinances, policies, um, our educational programs, inspections, maintenance, and how we document all these things. So what are we committing to the MPCA? The, the MPCA requires what they call six minimum control measures. Um, and they are as follows: public education and outreach, public participation and involvement, which is what we're doing tonight, illicit discharge detection and elimination, construction site stormwater runoff control, post-construction stormwater management, and lastly, pollution prevention and some good housekeeping items. So, highlights for 2021. As is standard for us every year, we're required to inspect at least twenty percent of our stormwater ponds and outfalls within our system. We did that in 2021. We also completed all of our inspections on all of our structural, um, stormwater BMPs, which is essentially any structures that have, uh, sumps in them that collect sediment before they're discharged into, you know, ponds or creeks, whatever, any outfalls. It helps collect sediment before it does that. Um, obviously, we inspected, we had a number of developments in town, both commercial and residential. And then the big thing for 2021 was the general MS4 permit was reissued by the MPCA in fall of '21. And that's something that help, happens on plus or minus a five-year cycle is when kind of they re, reissue it and there's some rules that are added and, um, changed, which I'll get into here a little bit later. But that was the big thing in fall of '21 is we are current with our permit. There are some things that we have to do to get up to speed with all the new rules, but they give us time to do that. But we do have a current permit. So plans for 2022, uh, we've already submitted the 2021 annual report to the MPCA, which is due at the end of June. We began plans of doing some tree and brush removal around our pond systems. Uh, Public Services is starting to look at that, um, looking at how they're gonna maintain some of those features. Um, obviously, we continued inspection for all the stormwater infrastructure. We're always looking to improve on our documentation, make it more efficient, less time-consuming, so we've implemented a few things. Starting to use GIS a little bit more for that, which is really helpful, makes things a lot more efficient. And then, uh, lastly, updating our SWP to, to meet those new requirements, which I mentioned just a bit ago. So what are those requirements? This is kind of a, just a concise list. It's kind of a lot of words here, but, um, here's the, the main points. Um, the biggest one is probably treating for fully reconstructed impervious surface on projects. Um, right now, you only have to treat when you're adding impervious surface. The new rule requires that you have to kind of get the old, the old, uh, stuff that hasn't been treated yet up to speed with the current standards. We haven't had to do that yet, but that is something going forward that we're gonna have to look more closely at and it's gonna make the rules more, more strict for that. So that's probably the biggest one. Um, then it focuses a little bit on education pieces. We have to pick two topics that we really hit on at the city in a given calendar year and do educational pieces around those. Um, then it gets into the de-icing chemicals, both, um, public and private facilities, and giving, um, some information about tips on how to protect that so you don't get salts in your wa, in the water going downstream. And then also some regulatory mechanisms for proper salt storage within those private facilities. Lastly, um, there's a piece about having regulatory mechanism for pet waste to be properly picked up and disposed of, both on public and private properties. So there are definitely some, some new requirements that will be seen. You know, you'll be, you'll be seeing some ordinance, um, wording updates that'll be forthcoming and that kind of stuff. And those are kind of the main things that, that you'll be looking at here in the future. So we're actually gonna be looking at, um, implementing some of those items yet this fall, so. Uh, future program needs, um, we've been, Chad and I have been talking about pond assessment. Um, a lot of our ponds in the city are getting to be, um, you know, twenty-plus years old now for some of the older developments. So thinking about how we want to start looking at those, seeing if they're becoming full, you know, do, do they need cleaning yet? So something we started to talk about. And obviously, improving our efficiencies, I touched on the GIS piece, um, and how we do our inspection and documentation, which helps on the back end for our annual report that we have to submit to the MPCA. So with that, that's kind of the changes in a nutshell, what we've done this year, um, the permit. I'd open it up to any questions. Yeah.
Any questions?
I have one.
Joy, go ahead.
Um, you mentioned in the plans for 2022 about beginning removal of tree brush adjacent to ponds and storm structures. Are most of our stormwater ponds within some sort of easement or outlot? Is any of it within, well, let me say that differently. Is it mostly outlot or is it easements on other property?
So our standard that we like to operate on these days is we put them all in outlots whenever we can.
Okay.
Some of the older developments from the nineties are within, um, private property with drainage utility, utility easements over them, obviously. But yeah, so that will be one, one piece that we'll have to really, you know, be proactive about how we communicate that to those property owners.
Okay.
When we are going out there, yep.
That's what I figured it was up next.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. That was it.
Any other questions? All right.
Were we planning on doing some dredging of those? Didn't we do some like eight years ago, up in the bluffs?
So the first thing we want to do is, before we go and do something like that, we just need to see, you know, how much sediment is really in them? No, we might not have to do anything.
Right.
But if we go out there and we, we see that they're all getting full, some of these older ones, then, then that would be the next logical step. But that'll be a ways out yet. We have to kind of take a look at them first and, and see.
Thank you.
All right, let's see. Um, we need to see, are there any public comments about that presentation? Yeah, go ahead.
I always forget if, um, how, I, I don't, I'm not part of a lot of public hearings, so I always like to remind the council. Um, the formal way to open a public hearing is for a motion, um, by a council member to open the public hearing, second it, open it, and then do the same thing to close the public hearing. It is a little more formal than I think maybe you're used to, but if we could do it that way, it's just nice to have that in the minutes and it's part of the record. So I always like to remind you of that.
Um, all right, my cheek sheet said differently. So, uh, can I get a motion to open the public hearing, please?
I will make a motion to open the public hearing.
A motion by Councilmember Mac.
A second.
Oh, I heard Glenn first and a second by Councilmember Henry. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Um, all right, so now are there any questions from any members of the public on the MS4 hearing? Okay, hearing done. Um, can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
A motion by Councilmember Mac.
Senator.
And a second by Councilmember Henry. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion, motion passes. All right, um, any additional council questions from the city council?
No.
All right, hearing done. Um, let's move on to the consent agenda. I would like to pull item 7.7 from tonight's consent agenda. So I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda, minus item 7.7.
A second.
Um, we have a motion by Mayor Johnson and a second by Councilmember Henry. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Um, all right, I just wanted to pull, um, 7.7 because I, um, am on the cap agency's board and so I want to recuse myself from that vote. So I don't have any questions about it. I think it's a great program, but, um, I will recuse myself from the vote, so.
Do you want me to make a motion to? I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Oh, no, just 7.7.
Just 7.7.
Oh, I'm sorry. I would like to make a motion to approve item 7.7 from the consent agenda.
A second.
Right, we have a motion by Councilmember Mac and a second by Councilmember McKnight. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And then, can we note that I did not, oh, I'm recusing myself from that one? All right, um, okay, moving on to business items. 8.1, the Certificate of Appropriateness Appeal for 416 Broadway. Mr. Merrick.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. On your screen is a picture of the home at 416 Broadway owned by Tracy Carlson. Uh, she made an application for, uh, a certificate of appropriateness for a window replacement project in the historic district, uh, which was denied, uh, by the HPC at their August 8th meeting. Uh, she's afforded the right to appeal to the city council, which she's, uh, doing tonight. A little history on our historic district, kind of apropos, the council recently amended, uh, a preservation ordinance for the city. And so that's, uh, essentially what enacts your, uh, preservation district or historic district. The city has nearly a hundred properties. Uh, the National Register of Historic Places and this, and the preservation ordinance, if you will, um, sets kind of the, um, outline of how that preservation or historic district will work, namely, uh, the creation of a heritage preservation commission, uh, which, uh, reviews, uh, applications to improve or repair or change exterior, um, exterior treatments to buildings in the historic district. Um, what they use as a guideline, um, is a, a set of residential, um, guidelines and in the case of a commercial property, commercial guidelines. And within, uh, these sets of guidelines, there's any number of, um, positions on windows, doors, roof treatments, siding, et cetera, signs in the case of, uh, commercial districts. Um, in this case, this is a residential, uh, property, again, 416 Broadway. Uh, the application was for the replacement of essentially all the windows that are up on the home. There's so, some more intricate detail in your packet. Um, the existing, uh, window is wood. The application is to replace with a vinyl window. Um, essentially, um, it's, it's clear in the residential guidelines that it's strongly discouraged to move to a vinyl window or in this, they also use aluminum windows as another, um, material that's not, uh, suggested for a residential, uh, historic building. Uh, the HPC has previously approved, uh, wood windows, obviously, but also a kind of a Fibrex or kind of a composite material. Uh, Ms. Carlson is, is appealing that decision, uh, to, and wants to install the vinyl windows. So she's, uh, here tonight with her contractor to appeal that decision, uh, of the Heritage Preservation Commission. So I'd invite Ms. Carlson and her contractor to approach the council and, and begin your appeal.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, my name is Tracy Carlson and I live at 416 Broadway Street. I'm a single mom of three kids. My son, as Austin, is thirteen. My daughter, Roar, is eight and my youngest daughter, Ariel, is five years old. We moved into this home on August 23rd of 2021. I am requesting that you guys accept our families to get new windows into our home. As currently right now, none of the windows open, which is a fire hazard. Um, all of our bedrooms are upstairs and if we were upstairs and a fire happened, we wouldn't make it out. We wouldn't be able to even get out the windows. I'm request, or I am replacing the windows with the same type of windows. The difference is that they're new and they can open, um, so we are safe in our home. Um, I, there isn't, um, any struc, there shouldn't be any structural damage or any difference to the home. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, so.
So just a little, there's, uh, it's been, I think, over ten years since the council last heard an appeal, so there's no kind of structure framework to it. Essentially, it's an opportunity for the council to ask, uh, questions of Ms. Carlson or a contractor. Um, you can ask questions of me related to the guidelines. We also, the city attorney is able to weigh in. Should there be any, uh, legal issues? We also have the city's building official, Nick Jorgensen, on hand tonight, uh, should you have any kind of building code type question. So kind of a, the floor is yours, Mayor and Council.
Right. Well, questions?
Um, as the HPC liaison, maybe I could start off with a little bit of information about the meetings that we held for this. So, um, when it comes to windows and doors as alterations to the exterior, uh, the HPC finds those very important because it can greatly alter, um, the integrity of a historic home when it comes to changing those things out. Um, when we went through some exercises as a group a couple of years ago, there were so few items that, um, we brought in-house that could be approved by staff administratively. Doors and windows were not one of those. The HPC was very adamant that that became, that came before them, um, to look at for approval or denials. We have set a precedent that we follow the guidelines and that, um, our homes in the historic district, um, when it comes to these windows and the materials that, um, are available, that they do stick with the wood or the wooden composite. I do know this myself. I live in a historic home, um, so I'm well aware of the historic headlines as well. We have, as the HPC, uh, they did review this application twice, so this came, um, first and then was denied. The applicant's, uh, window of appeal did expire. So the, um, the same application came back before us again, um, in order to reopen that window of appeal. They were both denied, um, and that has been the HPC's, um, unanimous vote and stance on this application.
When you say the integrity, is that structural or optically?
Um, it's optically. You can very much change the, um, the integrity of the home by changing those out. And we do, obviously, um, we are on the Department of the Interior with these, so we try to maintain that, um, integrity.
Uh, all right, any other questions?
Can I, can I ask another question of you, Christy, um, just from the HPC's perspective? Was it really the material that was at issue that the windows, the replacement windows are made of versus anything else? Style, color, sign, anything else?
Give me a second here. I gotta back up on my packet here. Uh, you know, I, foremost, it was the materials.
Okay.
Um, obviously, depending on, there's a lot of different window styles in this house. Um, the, having the four panes is, you know, quite a historic feature. Uh, I can't say whether if it came back with just the one-over-one, um, because that's, we have the one-over-one, but I think the bigger hangup was the material.
Okay.
Um, and not necessarily specifically the design.
Okay.
Um, I will say in the past, we have been, we have had some leniency on the rear of the house. It is not facing side or road. Um, however, it's not, in the application here, this application comes in as a whole. So it was denied as a whole because the, uh, materials are not in keeping with the guidelines that have been set forth.
Okay, thank you for the extra background.
Glenn?
How many of these windows have been altered in the past? Do you have an idea? Because when I look at the, uh, the photos of some in the backyard, it appears that there's been some changes, A, to the size of the windows that have been in there.
Yeah.
Um, and I'm also seeing what appears to be some aluminum on there right now. And are those on the back of the house?
That's the side of the house. That's the back.
I know that windows are expensive. There's no two ways about it. Um, but in keeping with accordance with the, um, registry of historical buildings, there's a few sources out there who live in town, where you can find windows that are be, that would be more historically correct, without adding a lot of cost to it. I did notice in your letter that in your closing sentence, um, I'm wanting the same windows that are there now, just with screens in them. And I'm looking at that going, you know, there's a lot of stuff in there that those windows, looks like some of those windows will actually take screens and you can just swap those out, if I'm not mistaken, on all some of these.
For the storm windows, is that what you mean, Glenn?
Yes, yes, on a few of them. But I'm more concerned about keeping it within the historical, um, guidelines.
All right, um, I know that sometimes in these applications, it includes a historical photo of the home. I assume there isn't one in here because we don't have one?
There's one in the HPC packet, but it was, it was kind of vintage, like nineteen seventies. So was, it didn't really give you a, a true picture, so we decided not to include it, or I decided not to include it.
Um, because I noticed the same thing that Glenn mentioned. It looks like these windows have been altered in some spots significantly before you were the owner of it. I get it. I know that windows are expensive. I'm trying to do them on my home and we're trying to piecemeal it because it's such a beast.
I'm trying to do them on my home and we're trying to piecemeal it because it's such a beast. Are there, so you said that the HPC has approved vinyl windows on the back and the side that doesn't have street frontage? I, it's been a long time, but it was, there were, I believe there was one that we did that was very hidden on the back of a house that wasn't seen. Like, I mean, you would have to traipse through like woods in someone's backyard to get there. And given the backyard of this house, it's very hidden as well. Yep. So I think that there may be able to be some, if, if this were to come back to the HPC with the appropriate, per the guidelines, materials for the front three sides, there may be some leniency on the back. Did you look at a different option, that composite option that is kind of a, sounds like?
So we, for, for us, we just use just the vinyl manufacturer is what we use for.
Your company.
For our company.
Got it. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, sure. Absolutely. Yeah. Can you introduce?
I wasn't sure.
No, for sure. Yeah, go ahead.
My name's Mark Little with your home improvement company as a contractor. Just a question when it comes like to the aesthetics and the looks, because that's what it kind of seems like is the big thing, right? With the HPC is just like the look. So, I mean, there's, there's different looks on just Tracy's house and then just some neighboring homes there too. I noticed a wood window, you can kind of tell based how the little bit flatter on the frame. But I'm also seeing like aluminum storm windows on some of them too. So I'm seeing like different looks there. So we've talked about aluminum, that's preferred and wood and then the composite fiberex. So that's three different looks right there. You can kind of see it in some of the homes. But Tracy, what she's looking for at the vinyl windows, one, it's the safety is probably the biggest thing. Also energy efficiency with the windows. But aesthetically, the windows were gonna, would make a huge improvement to the house and how it look. If there's grids needed, we can get grids. So I think that's part of it too. So I'm just curious that there's so many things that are approved that a vinyl window that can be uniformed on our house. What makes the big opposition on having your house really just uniform with what they're looking at?
Yeah.
I could, Mayor and Council, I can speak to that. So I wouldn't argue with you from that perspective. I would offer though that each one of these homes kind of has their own story. And so the windows are installed at different points of time. So the, the look of it is really, not really as important as the materials. Because each of these homes, if you look into the residential design guidelines, they actually have a certain amount of properties that, like they call out the types of windows that are, were used in that home. And it sounds like maybe like your agent maybe didn't tell you about kind of some of the heavy lifts that are involved with owning a historic home. So it's always an issue that we're trying to kind of get out there with real estate folks that, you know, when it comes down to a choice here, the council needs to direct or we're asking the council to direct staff on a findings of fact to either uphold or reverse the decision of the HPC. Neither a pro or a con, but just one thing I would offer for the council to consider is if you choose something that's a departure from the design guidelines, when we're stating that findings of fact, we need to be, right? Ask you to be cognizant of the same comment that Tracy's contractor just made is someone will come in in a month and say, you approved vinyl windows on all three sides at four sixteen and you just did it last month. And so how are we setting up the HPC for success? I totally sympathize with Ms. Carlson's position and the costs of homeownership, especially in the historic district. But this is something to consider about how we're setting ourselves up for future applications.
And that's why I did mention also the precedent of when we approve windows is because, just as Brent is saying, if we say, okay, you can do, this house can do it, but then this house was held to a different standard, then now we are really creating problems. And those guidelines were set in place so that we don't, so that we are uniform and that when changes do come about to these homes, that they are done uniformly. And that's unfortunately, one of the hardest parts that we have about setting up here is that we need to be really consistent in our requirements. So I'm gonna vote to uphold the HPC's decision. You know, I think our historic downtown is something special and it's a little bit off a beaten path. I, I think it's important that we, we maintain the look. And understanding, you know, of somebody who's in the same market for windows, I think that, you know, no disrespect intended, I think there are other companies out there who could help you find the windows that would fit into our code and into the historic district. Just sounds like it's not an option through your vendor. Any other comments?
I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Tracy, so you bought the house on August twenty twenty one?
August twenty third, twenty twenty one, last year.
Okay, so over here. And then I see the quote was from September, so this is probably like your first project here.
Oh, second.
Been working on this for a year. Did, there was two applications. Was there a difference? And I might be able to get some input to as the liaison. Was there a difference between the two applications?
No, they were identical because the, the appeal time had expired. So this would allow them to come and appeal was to reapply and they reapplied with the same one.
Do you have like a ballpark idea of what the cost would be if it was something that was typically approved right away through HPC?
I don't know that they would, if you have not priced that out.
Like if you, if you shopped for other materials for windows, if you have. And then when you purchased the home, were you aware that it was in the historic district?
Yep.
And then just one last thing, just to kind of like for this whole process, have you done any other projects improvements where you've gotten in front of their committee?
Not in front of here, but I have gotten.
In front of the HPC.
I've just got.
Heritage Preservation, just the windows, like that's when you're only.
Yeah, otherwise than that.
Just because I'd want it to be a good experience. But I am in the same tone as Mayor Johnson where it's something that I would want to be upheld. I would have some lenience on the backyard or the backside of the house. You know, maybe that is a compromise, but just for that uniformity. To just kind of adhere to the guidelines.
Yeah, I guess I concur. I mean, Courtney's right. This is one of the hardest things about setting up here. Because this is not the only area that we have to make decisions about and we have to be very careful about precedent and equity of treatment within the community. It is not an easy decision for sure. And, but I concur that I think we've got to uphold the HPC's decision here in this case.
And, oh, did you need, do we need to vote on this?
Yeah, we do.
Yeah. Is there any more discussion, Glenn?
No.
No. Christy, you good? I am good, thank you. All right.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Just so I'm clear before the council votes to, I assume the, the basis of the decision, which it sounds like the, the HPC decision is going to be upheld, that's going to be generally the references on thirty, pages thirty one and thirty two of the city's resident, historic residential standards, which talks about window replacement and how, you know, wood, windows should be repaired or replaced with the same materials rather than with the more modern materials. Generally, those standards, which we can build into the resolution when it comes back to the council. I just want to make sure that that's on the record because we'll use a lot of that to support that decision in writing, which is required under the code. So I assume that's the case, but I want to make sure I have a consensus about that.
Yeah. For me, it's that it doesn't meet the design guidelines. But I think the longer version of that is what's in the memo.
Okay.
I think some things I'm just thinking about as you guys, you know, some of you guys are making your decisions that we talk about uniformity, but you're also willing to let them, a homeowner put five vinyl windows on the back of the house. So it's not going to be uniform. So you're willing to say, hey, I here to put aluminum here. But then if Tracy wants, you could put three vinyl ones back there and two wood ones back there. So I think that's something to think about if you guys continue to make these decisions. Are they really uniform? The other thing too is to think about some of these homeowners and the cost. So if it's X amount for this and now it's going to be another forty percent more, will these homeowners be able to get these projects done? So we have to think, all right, are they going to get the projects done? And if not, as a city, are you guys okay continuing to look at the homes that are still outdated? You know, safety issues and things like that. So it's just some things me processing, just actually not even as a contractor. This is if I'm sitting back there or anywhere, some things I'm thinking about. It's like, it's not really uniform if you get put two, three, four different styles or kinds of window on a house. And also too, if these homeowners can't afford now a thirty thousand dollar project, now as a city, we'd still be driving by and looking at these homes that are, are outdated and windows that don't open, but are for single moms and people that have kids. So just some things I'm thinking about, really just as a person, not of the community, but as somebody, things that are crossing my mind.
Point taken. Thank you. Let's see. So back to Mr. Anderson's question. Are we all kind of on the same page?
Yes.
For the reason?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Is that what you needed from us?
It is, yes. And the motion would just be to direct staff to prepare a resolution upholding the HPC's decision. And then that would come back to your, your next meeting, probably just on the consent agenda.
Okay. So with that, I would entertain a motion. I'll make a motion to create a resolution upholding the HPC denial of the certificate of appropriateness at
Four sixteen.
Four sixteen Broadway. We have a motion by Councilmember Muck. A second. And a second by Councilmember McKnight. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Sorry, Tracy. All right. Item eight point two, the twenty twenty three preliminary levy. Shuti, sitting up front tonight. Welcome.
Thank you very much. There we go. All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council. All right. Tonight, we are here to look at adopting a preliminary tax levy. We are not adopting the budget tonight. And as you know, this is the maximum amount of levy for twenty twenty three. We can only go down from here. So this is a presentation that we've seen a couple of times. But we are going to do it again. Because it's fun. Don't laugh. All right. So here we are at September nineteenth and like I said, we are considering the preliminary levy tonight. Next will be October third and we'll be getting a first look at the enterprise budgets. All right. And then we'll just keep working as information comes in. We'll be refining and completing more information and sharing it with you as it comes in. And then December fifth is a truth and taxation public hearing, which will give residents an opportunity to share their thoughts. And then you'll be looking at adopting a final budget and tax levy for twenty twenty three on December nineteenth. So that is our schedule. I just want to remind everybody that the city of Carver does not take in any revenue from franchise fees. Very few cities in Carver County do this. And so that's kind of something that we pride ourselves on here.
Lynn, can you make a comment about, or Brent, maybe? If we were to have franchise fees or that surrounding cities who do, where do they see that? Where does it show up on their bills?
Where does a franchise fee show up?
Right. So is it going to show up on, it shows up on your Excel bill. It's kind of a hidden fee that just gets.
Yeah, there's a, there's typically a line item that'll say city of fill in the blank franchise fee in whatever amount.
I shouldn't say hidden, but it is, it's spine print on your bill as to where it's going.
Fee.
Line item.
City of Chaska makes more money in franchise fees than our budget. Say that again?
The city of Chaska makes more each year in franchise fees than our general fund budget.
Wow. Great point. Thank you. Okay. Sorry. No, I, that was a really interesting point. That was a good data point. I liked it. I'll add that to my next, next slide. Okay. All right. And then another reminder is just the property tax collections do not support our water and sewer operations and vice versa. So water and sewer operations do not support our general operations. So I just wanted to show also an example of our water bill in case people were wondering what that looks like. All right. And preliminary tax notices have come, will come in the mail by November twenty twenty two. And as you can see on this proposed tax statement, this is kind of what it looks like for Carver County. I'm sure you all have seen it. Carver County, the city of Carver is only one portion of your total tax bill. And so I have that highlighted in red here. And once people get this statement, it's going to be too late for them to argue their property value, their property valuation. And so once, so now is the time to do that is basically what I'm trying to say. Actually, it's actually too late. The, in June is when they should have done that. So.
Then why do we have the truth and taxation meeting in December?
That is for the levy.
Okay.
Yes, that is for the city levy.
Okay.
So.
The time for the homeowners to go to the county regarding their values was?
In June, actually. Yes.
Three months ago.
Yes. They, I mean, so if they're in that process and it's very difficult to actually go through that process and go to tax court and all of that stuff. But if people do have questions about it and how they were, their property values were calculated, they can contact the Carver County Property Assessor at assessment@co.carver.mn.us. They are very helpful there and they will explain everything to you. This next slide is just showing the taxable market value for the Carver County cities. And I have it going in declining value. As you can see, what's the, why I wanted to put this on here is I just want to show you the taxable market value increase percentages for twenty twenty three. I mean, it's from twenty twenty two to twenty twenty three. I, I told you in the couple of slides in the work sessions that Carver County has been experiencing the highest that they've seen in historic years. And this just shows you that every city experienced twenty percent or more except for Chanhassen. And this slide shows that Carver experienced the highest at thirty four percent. This is taxable market value, so. One portion of our levy is the street maintenance levy. That's three hundred and twenty thousand dollars for next year. And this is just showing the different street sections that we'll be doing with that money. It'll be helping to do a pavement management plan, the mill and overlay of River Oaks development. And we will be using four hundred and twenty one thousand from the street maintenance fund. We will also be using state aid. Here is a slide showing our debt service levy history. This is part two of our total levy is our debt service. You can see that this year in twenty twenty three for next year, there will be a decrease actually in our debt service levy. And that is due to a reduction in payments for the twenty nineteen B and the twenty twenty one C bonds, as well as we had one of our bonds paid off, so. And the third part of our levy is the general fund property tax levy to help our operations. So this shows the general levy, the debt levy and the street levy, and then the total levy. This also shows all of them in number form. So you can see that for twenty twenty three, we're proposing a three million eight hundred and fifty one thousand nine hundred and eighty dollar levy, which is a six point nine percent increase from twenty twenty two. So this slide is showing that our tax rate last year or in twenty twenty two is forty eight point four percent. With the levy that we're proposing and the market values and everything, the tax capacity that came in for the city of Carver, our tax rate would decrease to thirty seven point one two percent. So the average value home in Carver last year was three hundred and twenty eight thousand five hundred dollars. That same home increased by twenty percent to four hundred and ten thousand eight hundred dollars. The overall taxes for that person at home last year for the, just the city of Carver was one thousand five hundred and fifty three dollars. This year, if we're proposing a six point nine percent levy increase, their, city of Carver taxes would actually decrease by twenty nine dollars. And you can see the calculation that is done right here. This is showing it again in picture form because that's really fun too. This is showing it again in picture form, because that's really fun, too.
We didn't laugh this much during Brent's presentation.
Oh. Well, I can be super serious.
Is that how I sound?
Yes. Great. Just kidding. I'll go back to this one, because I really do like it, though. Um, so yes, it's just showing that in twenty twenty-two, the average valued home paid about fifteen fifty-three. And this year, the average valued home is expecting to pay fifteen twenty-four. And that's due to, like I said, big market value increase, tax rate decrease. Um, you know, they're paying less taxes. It's a good thing. So here's the update. Again, tonight, you're looking at adopting the levy, not the budget. This is the maximum amount of levy. It can be lowered, but it cannot be raised. We'll continue to keep working as numbers come in, health insurance, um, different known, unknown items now, but they will be known by the December. Enterprise fund budgets, um, October third, you will see those, and we'll discuss those. And they kind of roll into the long-term financial plan, which you've already seen once. And then review budget and fiscal conditions, like I said, November fourteenth-ish, we'll have more of those information out. Truth and taxation public hearing on December fifth. And then we will adopt the twenty-three budget, certify the twenty-three tax levy on December nineteenth, which will be here before we know it. So tonight, we have a resolution before you to adopt the twenty twenty-three preliminary tax levy. I'll take any questions.
Questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Oh, and I know it's a little levy, but um if you can go to the slide on the street maintenance and um pavement management plan. So I get the three hundred and twenty, this is what the poll was from the levy, and then I'm looking down at that state aid.
Mm-hmm.
Is that use, is that a whole bucket of state aid?
So we get an amount every year, so it'll drain it almost to zero um after we do the fourth street project with the twenty twenty-three plan. But then we'll get another allocation in the following years.
For twenty twenty-three, is that what we think the state aid will be?
No, we get about uh between two hundred and fifty and three hundred thousand a year. It will fluctuate based on the amount of miles that we have, of state aid miles in the city.
Okay. And how do we get five hundred and ninety-seven, or is that spread out over?
Because we have got, we didn't spend any of our state aid money this year.
Okay, okay.
It'll go into next year, and if we fall short, you can actually uh give an advance on future years' funding to get a project done.
Okay, so would it be like that was the whole amount from twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three?
Correct.
Going towards that, okay.
Correct.
Thank you. I know that wasn't part of it, but.
It's a good question.
Joy?
I don't have any questions.
Christie?
You know, we've seen this a number of times in work sessions, so um I feel like I know it from front to back, so I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Indeed.
Glenn?
Nor do I.
All right, um, I was just gonna say, um, you know, I've shared this before, but I had some pretty big concerns going into this and having the valuations, and how would that affect things, and everybody's living in more expensive houses. It's fair to assume that your taxes are gonna be higher. The fact that Carver has a story that we can say that it won't be is a really good story, so thank you for your work in doing that. Um, I also wanted to let you know, I'm hearing anecdotally about really big increases in a lot of communities in the metro because of um, well, various reasons, facilities improvements and staffing needs. And I was curious about it the other night, so I was looking in some of our neighboring communities and in some metro communities. And I'm completely biased, but we have the easiest to find information on our website, and it's the easiest to find even to hack it. You know, I was digging in neighboring communities, and I still don't know what their increase is gonna be.
I was doing the same thing.
Okay, so thank you.
I can't find anything.
Brent and everybody, just being able to have this out there and to be so transparent. Um, I'm looking forward to when the budget guide goes on the website, but I think that this is just a really great resource for residents, and it's easy for us, too, if and when we get questions, to say like, here's the link. This was our presentation from the September nineteenth meeting, so well done on that.
Can I show you something that I've been working on as well?
Yes.
After tonight's meeting, yeah.
Oh!
I love the enthusiasm, okay. Yes, so I've been working on this since I started. I just haven't had time to um put actual numbers in it or like put a lot of time into it, because I've been a little busy, but. Um, this is just a one to two-page document that I've been looking to to make, so that it tells the story about the budget. Um, this is a preliminary, obviously, so once the budget's done, it'll be like the budget document. So I was gonna make it a one-pager, but Brent said, you know what, let's make it a two-pager and give more information. That's, is really a good idea. So up here, I just have the preliminary twenty twenty-three budget levy. And um I have the link to our budget right here, so that people can go out there and check it out. I have our total um levy right here. This is the operating, just the operating budget part of it. And then it says, where do the dollars go? And it says forty-seven cents to operations, twenty-seven cents to public works, public safety, parks and recs. And then I just kind of explain what it, what are operations. It's just a very general term. I mean, I didn't want to split the dollar up and keep splitting it. This just gives it a better visual.
Yeah, yep.
Feel. Um, so then I broke up city of Carver budgeted expenses by department, and I compared it to last year, just so that people can have a visual to see how have things changed in the last year. And then on the second page, I have historic city tax rates, which is kind of, yeah, and so I have that, and then I just have this little cheat sheet over here to give, throw out some facts.
Hmm.
Um, market increase of thirty-one percent compared to um for twenty twenty-three compared to eight point four, I got forty-eight point four typo. Lynn? I'll fix that. Um, see, I'm still, it's a work in progress. Uh, and then I threw in the truth and taxation public hearing date on here, so that people know when that is. And then I have the tax impact to the average valued home. And then it just shows people, if you had an average, average valued home in twenty twenty-two, what was the tax rate? What would you be paying for city of Carver tax? Just basically what I just showed all of you, but this is just a front and back page. We can have it at the counter. We can have it on our website. Tells the story of the budget.
Yep.
Okay.
Nice.
Anyway, just wanted to share that with you all.
Love it. Good work.
That is great.
Nicely done. Um, all right, if we don't have any other questions?
I'll make a motion to adopt uh resolution one forty-five dash twenty-two certifying the twenty twenty-three preliminary tax levy in the amount of three million eight hundred and fifty-one thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars.
I'll second. We have a motion by Councilmember McKnight and a second by Councilmember Muck. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign? Motion passes. All right, well done. Thank you. Um, item eight point three, the twenty twenty-two infrastructure project bid award. Mr. Schmidt?
All right, good evening again. This is probably as exciting as the preliminary levy, so without further ado.
We'll judge by how much.
We'll jump right into it. So um I was hoping to bring a little better news tonight. I'll just lead it off with that, but um we're at the point, we had advertised the twenty twenty-two infrastructure improvements project for bids. Um, opened bids on the thirteenth of September. I had a typo in my memo. Said the nineteenth, but it was actually the thirteenth, so last Tuesday, we opened bids. We received two bids on the project. Um, the bids did come in over what we were expecting, so. Um, just to back up, um, the, this project involved rehabbing three of our lift stations in town. Uh, the Spring Creek Lift Station was a full um electrical control replacement with a generator addition. The Carver Creek Lift Station had uh control and fiber improvements to it. And then the Oak Street, which was our second biggest lift station, um, had some fiber work done to it, and then a new generator and transfer switch, automatic transfer switch. So that's kind of the scope as a whole. Um, the bids came in um higher than what we were expecting. The low bid was from Kilmer Electric, uh, which is a company that does a lot of work for these types of projects. But they came in at about four hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars, which was about a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars more than what we were thinking it was gonna be. Um, right now, the generators, uh, that kind of stuff is really just high-priced, long lead time. So just with all that uncertainty, it's reflecting in the pricing. So the, the generators are over a year out right now, is what they're saying. So it's, it's just a tough, kind of a, where we're at with the bidding process, and um that's where the numbers are coming in today, so. Um, so the hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, that would have to be made up. If there, if you were to award the project, it would have to come out of the sanitary sewer fund for that overage, so. Um, we have four hundred and ten thousand dollars left in ARPA with a uh total project cost that we have figured right now at five hundred and seventy-five thousand. So that's a hundred and sixty-five thousand more than what we were originally planning. Um, from staff's perspective, uh, public services, Chad and Chad's um opinion, Oak Street is in really tough shape. That generator has been limped along for a long time now. Um, number of things wrong with it. He can't get parts either, so um he'd really like this project to go. Um, so that would be our recommendation, but we do understand that it is a very big increase from what we were all planning, so. Um, he would either be awarding the project or rejecting bids and trying again next year. So that's kind of where things are at.
Erin, could you just talk a little bit about the, there's such a big jump between these two bids? And maybe talk a little bit about why you think there's such a big jump? Because when, when I see that, it makes me a little nervous for the low bid then, to say, what are we getting? If it's that much lower than the only other one in this case.
Yeah, so Pembroke Companies was the second bidder. They actually did our um Carver Bluffs Lift Station project um last year, so again, they're reputable, reputable contractor. Um, I don't know why there's such a big gap. Obviously, there wasn't a lot of bids, so um maybe they weren't that hungry for work. But um I think Kilmer Electric, you know, they're quite a bit lower. I'm not concerned that they can't do the work for that amount of money.
Okay.
Um, they're a, a good, really good contractor. It's just if council is, you know, wants a stomach that, that much of an increase or not.
The reason I ask is because, so is this something that we could foresee change orders coming in? Because sometimes you'll get these low, the lowest bids, and they're really low compared to other ones. And then all of a sudden, you start seeing these change orders come in, and we're starting to having to pump some more money into this, so. Um, is this a project where you would expect a few of those, maybe not any, or depending where we get? I mean, you're not digging into the road and finding things you didn't expect, so.
The scope is, is fairly well-defined. There's only so much work that's going on, so I really wouldn't expect a lot of, of that type of thing going on. Um, you know, who knows what happens when we open up the old control panel and something else goes wrong or something? But there's only so much scope creep, I would call it, that can happen in this type of a contract. Um, we are still preserving that, that five seventy-five, still maintain the five percent contingency with it, so. If all goes well, that wouldn't be realized, so you won't see the full one sixty-five increase, but I always like to keep that in, in our back pocket in case we would need to use it, because some things do come up. It's just the way it is, so.
Thank you.
I had a question about the ARPA funds. Do we have any, um, any other limitations or restrictions on how quickly we need to use those? If we don't use them for this project?
Dave or Lynn?
I, I believe the, the deadline for getting a contract in place is the end of twenty twenty-four. And then the work, I think you even have a year or two after that, so.
Okay, so that's not necessarily part of this decision. Okay.
Deadline with the, with the ARPA money.
Glenn or Lori?
I have a question on the funding, so if the additional amount is taken from the sewer, sanitary sewer fund, is that put off another project? Does that take something away from getting done?
I did look, and we are sufficient in the cash to pay for that. And I did speak with the auditor as well and um put that in the long-term plan to adjust for that amount. So we will be reflecting, if you pass it, um, we can have it reflected in the long-term plan for the next version that you see, if you want. Um, but yes, there is sufficient cash in the sewer for that.
Thank you. So just to piggyback off of Lori's question, this would be, as far as the long-term plan goes, kind of rearranging things a little bit, because we're seeing this now, and it's an overage, a little more than we anticipated, so rearranging priorities.
Yeah, it'd be looking like adding a piece of equipment to the sewer portion, to like the sewer fund. Yeah.
So will we be pushing things back a year? You know, something's gonna get pushed back? No?
Okay.
Chad, do we, if we prioritized our list, um, I understand the bid came in for the three, the three lift stations, right?
Correct.
Can we break those up and break down the, and prioritize the list of those? I mean, a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars over what you originally estimated is a chunk of change. It's it's thirty-three percent over. My math is right. Um, can we break up the, the lift station projects? We can't. Erin?
You?
You're shaking your head? Okay.
We're sorry, honey. It was the thirty-three percent that.
My math was off?
No, because Brent, yeah, Brent had his thirty-three percent, so there's a little bit of giggles for that. We're, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
So we already had a list of maybe nine or ten projects that we whittled down to these three being kind of highest priority.
Yeah.
As far as can we piece them together on the contract? I don't think we can. Erin?
So Glenn, are you asking, can we reduce the scope of the project?
Yes.
So what we would need to do, we would still need to award a contract to Kilmer Electric, and we'd have to come back later with a change order to council saying we were, we would change order this part of the contract out.
Okay.
So that, the, the way it would always work is you still have to award a contract first, so. Um, I've had some discussions with Kilmer, because I suspected that something like that would get asked tonight. And I think they'd be willing to work with us. I don't think you're gonna necessarily see a, a complete, you know, one-to-one reduction, just because things are tied together, so, you know, there's multiple control panels, so just economy of scale. Um, but I think they'd work with us if it's something we want to look at.
Before you chime in, Brett, I have one question for you, Erin. So for the um, oh my gosh, the word just left my brain.
Um. Rider? Lift station?
Nope, it's uh setting up the project area, coming in. And setting that. Mobilization, thank you. It was there and it was, so um obviously, we're paying mobilization charges for them to come out. Do we know how much they're charging us within that bid project for that mobilization? Because obviously, if we went and had to do it again, we'd be repaying that. Or we'd pay that a second time to mobilize them if we had to do the, another.
Yeah. Um, they didn't have much on mobilization. They had about five grand on it, so.
Okay, that's what you know. Thank you.
So the availability of the lift station pumps um and the generators is a year out?
Generators are the worst pieces. The control panel, that equipment is, is pretty far out there. We do, the completion date is next December on this project.
As of December twenty twenty-three.
Correct, so that, we planned that accordingly, because we knew it was gonna be hard to get things properly. So um, yeah, that's where things are at.
So I'm gonna ask the same question that you just did, but if we award this tonight, we won't see a generator likely until a year from now. Or this construction project start, it won't be piecemeal. There's nothing that they can do right away.
So there is definitely work they can do. I mean, Kilmer said they'd be willing to get started here this fall or winter, if, as long as stuff starts to show up.
Can they do enough work to make this, what is it, the Oak Street Lift Station not in as scary a place as it is right now?
The generator is, is really the tough piece on that one.
Okay.
And we did, we did say that in all cases, they need to keep that hooked up, whether it's in a temporary configuration or, or whatnot. That is in the, in the contract documents and what they bid, so plan for that, but. Yeah.
I will say, it makes me a little nervous knowing that this could be a year out to piecemeal it. Like, I like where you're coming from, Glenn, to say, you know, is this possible? Can we do this? But when we're looking at possibility of yearly time, that can push us out. But when we're looking at possibility of yearly time, that can push us out so far and if we have trouble.
Well, yeah, we just have.
Then it becomes even longer.
Right.
Right.
Fairly recent event that caused issues for residents. I would hate to see something like this.
Be the. Cause more.
The issue behind, you know, us dragging our feet. And already, if we awarded tonight, it's taking a little bit of a gamble, right? And like, what's gonna happen in the next twelve months?
I mean, the materials could come in right away. All of a sudden, you know, some other cities might drop out of their, their projects. So, we don't know. Or it could take two years to get them. We just don't know.
Well, let's be honest, they're putting a year out. Who knows?
Yeah.
I was just gonna, Erin, when did you prepare the estimate for this project? So, we were work. We were working with an electrical engineer this summer, you know, so like June, July is when we were really working through the estimate. It just, yeah, where things went in the last month or so. I would just offer to the council, these are, we're talking about sanitary sewer lift stations, so I can see pros and cons to each decision. I just, just Murphy's Law, if you start picking which one you're gonna do, the one that you don't pick is the one that's gonna fail. I mean, and Chad and his team have the resources to, we have, you know, trailer generators, you know. I don't want to give the impression that one of these is ready to fail. Like, right now, you know, they're operating perfectly right now. We're, we have the resources to repair them if they have issues. But it's just like any other piece of equipment. These are at the top of the list. It just turns out that the ARPA money is now functioning more like a grant. And we're taking part of the sanitary sewer fund to, to pay the balance. But it's not like a piece of, if it was like the payloader, you'd say, okay, we can get another year out of the payloader. So, just some random comments.
Thank you. All right. Anyone with any other thoughts or do you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution one forty-six dash twenty-two, awarding a contract to Kilmer Electric Company incorporating the amount of four hundred and seventy-seven thousand four hundred and twenty-one dollars and ninety-one cents for the twenty-twenty-two infrastructure improvements project.
A second. A motion by Councilmember Sarah and a second by Councilmember McKnight. Any further discussion?
I do have one. Lori, I believe you might have said four hundred and twenty-two or twenty-one? And it's four hundred and twenty-two. I just want to make sure we have the right dollar note.
Yes.
So. So, do we need to amend or just make notes?
Should I clarify? Four hundred and seventy-seven thousand four hundred and twenty-one?
Twenty-two.
Four hundred and twenty-two.
Does it really say that?
Yeah.
Oh, four hundred and twenty-two dollars and ninety-one cents.
Okay, so we still have a motion by Councilmember Sarah and a second by Councilmember McKnight. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign. All right, motion passes. All right. Communications, Mr. Merrick?
I have none this evening. Thanks, Council.
Uh, Glenn, let's start on this side.
Uh, we did not have a planning commission meeting this month, so we will have one next month, though.
Christie? Uh, I think we all knew this was coming. Obviously, we had steamboat days at the beginning of this month. And I have a lot of, you know, thank yous to go out just from when it goes to, you know, residents, businesses. City staff was fantastic, by the way. I want that to be, and the fire department also. We couldn't do this without your help, and it was really great. And obviously, it's the same every year. They're very helpful. We, we couldn't do it without them. So, I want the city staff and the fire department to know that we really, really appreciate all of the hard work that you helped put into the community festival. Secondly, then, HPC, I was out of town this week. Did we end up having a meeting?
Yes, the, we did, we had, HPC approved one certificate of appropriateness for, it's one thirteen, Fourth Street East, for a storm door.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right. I don't have any updates?
Sure.
Nope, you neither?
Right. Um, let's see. My updates, I had a meet the mayor event at Carver Crossing. It's always a really good and engaged event. We, the, was it the Thursday night before Steamboat Days? We did the Edith Ann Award presentation to Sandy and Tom. Twenty, twenty, twenty? And it was funny, I was shopping at the Funky Dove on Saturday and they were in there. And I said, is that the Edith Ann Award winner? So, they were, they have a beautiful house. This year, post-COVID, we got an interior and an exterior tour and it's lovely. Tom is a little irked because now he's gotta keep weeding and fertilizing his lawn for another year since it's a one-year cycle that he has the award and the sign that he said in jest.
He's gonna do it anyways.
Yeah, 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 no. He, it's kind of what Sandy said. So, that was fun. That's always one of my favorite awards to do each year. I had my mayor's office hours last Saturday during Steamboat Days here at City Hall. I have Steamboat Days on my list as well. It's always such a good fun event. And there is a ton of volunteer hours and time that's spent on that, a ton of staff time that's spent on that. And I appreciate everyone's efforts on that. Last Tuesday, Brent and I participated in the Carver County Commerce Corridor Tour. It's a lot of Cs, with Greater MSP. And so, Greater MSP is kind of a development agency and trying to bring more development, primarily focused on industrial to the Twin Cities area. Carver County, within the last year, became a member of Greater MSP and Commissioner Matt Uterman sits on their board now. And so, he was able to get a couple of staff members from Greater MSP out. And we started at the Arboretum and then we went on a trolley tour of the county. And we went to Victoria, Waconia, Norwood Young America, Cologne, Carver, and then back to Chaska. And there were representatives from the railroad and the school district and each of the communities and the chambers. And we all, when we were kind of in our own respective spaces, we were able to kind of sit up at the front and talk to these women from Greater MSP and say, this is Carver. This is our future industrial corridor. This is planned to be industrial. This is where we have industrial now. This is where it will be in the future. This is where our workforce housing is. And, you know, kind of sharing, we have really great access to Highway two twelve and letting them know that. So, a really great afternoon. And then, we spent the afternoon in a kind of classroom and a boardroom at the Arboretum and kind of went through and had a whiteboard session where we talked about what our long-term goals were for the county. But then, Brent asked a really good question because the woman from Greater MSP was facilitating all of this. And she was asking us the questions. And Brent flipped it on her and said, okay, so what do you see from us? What do we need? What is important that we don't have? And it was really poignant that she said workforce housing. This woman had worked as an independent contractor in the past, trying to help businesses throughout the country relocate. And she said that fifteen years ago, ten years ago, even five years ago, that wasn't necessarily on the radar of these companies as they were looking to move their headquarters. But now, it's top three of their questions as far as like infrastructure, workforce, and, you know, access to, to transportation or whatever. So, that was just a really significant takeaway. Last Friday, we had the Carver Business Alliance meeting. As I mentioned earlier, Barbie Harder visited Carver last night and was able to kind of introduce us to our community. We walked a little bit. Because it was raining, we got in the car and kind of drove down to Fleet Farm and then back and just kind of showed her around. And then, the only other thing that I have is the League of Women Voters Candidate Forum. It's at seven o'clock right here on Thursday night, and I think we'll see a few people here. That's all that I had.
I have something. Two things, actually. I want to start by thanking Christie for all of her hard work with Steamboat Days. It's a thankless job.
I concur.
But, but it seems to be getting better and better every year. And it's, for the amount of hours you put into that, it all came off and it was, it was great. Thank you.
I appreciate that. But no, I have to, I always have to say, no one can do this alone, right? So, I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
It takes, it takes, it takes a crew of people, that's for sure. And then, I would like to offer our condolences to the Lenz and family. John was a pillar in Chaska and Carver and mayor of Carver, fire department forever.
Charter member of the Lions Club.
Yes.
Also, our first club president.
John will, John will be missed, but his legacy, his legacy lives long and we'll miss him. So, that's all I have.
Yeah, thanks for mentioning that, Glenn. His death and it will be noticed in our community. He was such a great community supporter, so. On that sad note, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
A motion by Councilmember Mock.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Henry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign. Motion passes. Good evening.